So I. Fund on the income, it's that we have a budget of twenty thousand set up. We received twenty thousand seventy seven dollars. So we're over budget. We've received over our budget of seventy seven dollars. Now, that doesn't sound like much, but every little bit helps you. Um. The last column is your percentage of your budget. Um. If you look down, so the first one says, you know, you're you're a hundred point thirty nine percent of your budget. Return on investment says you're a hundred and forty three, but if you average out. The last word says total general fund, and if you look all all the way over.
I'm not tracking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Page four of eleven.
Right, total general fund. Okay, see, yes, after the first line.
It averages it out through the year. So right now, you're at fifty three point five six.
But that's fifty percent.
That's fifty percent.
So we're tracking pretty.
So we're tracking pretty close.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Return on investments is surprising with you. Those interest rates keep saying high, which has helped us. We came in well. Um, if you look at previous years, um, we've never reached that close. It's just thanks for that, right?
Yeah, I say those things, they're gonna drop tomorrow.
Okay, so we're track we're tracking pretty close to what we have by this way.
Yeah. Do we have, we know what we have surplus right now?
Right now, there's no surplus. We are current, nope, we are at fifty three percent, yeah. Right. So if you look at the very last page, eleven of eleven. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take over and. So if we look at our total expense and I'm looking, um, other income expense. If you look at percentage of budget for total expense for the year. Be the second line of your of that page, we're at fifty three point oh nine percent for the year. So we're right on track.
Now, typically in budgets, you don't necessarily go building a surplus.
No.
Right?
No.
No. Budgets are built in fifty thousand dollars to plus.
We didn't.
Yeah.
This fiscal year's eleven.
I thought it was seven. I thought it went down. Yeah, and then went down to about eleven. Right. And now we're. And I I don't think that's typically part of a budgetary process. You typically budget for what you're going to use. If there happens to be a surplus, that's.
That's why you set a budget.
Right.
You don't want to get into a tax situation where you're over fifty thousand dollars. And they're because they're gonna come back if, say, they would come in, the state would come in and audit your budget. They're gonna look at you and go, you're very good budgeting. Why are you fifty thousand dollars surplus on the budget?
Exactly.
You want to run as tight as you can to stay on that line.
At the federal level, I think if you don't spend the money, they'll plot.
Yeah.
Right, you don't, you don't get to keep it.
And they're good at spending money.
Yeah.
Up to the end of the year, and we'll say, oh, gosh, we got a thousand dollars left in our budget, so that's our show for it. Not like we can say, let's suicide fifteen thousand dollars worth surplus. If we have a surplus of fifty thousand dollars, we could do a lot of stuff.
Right. So what we have to do, though, and this is really important for the budget discussion. If if we're going, i- if we see needs, and we all, I think, sort of add things that we want to see in the budget. They should be budgeted for in the proper, not a surplus, but as line items.
The thing of it is, is you make your budget and you do want to stick as close to, you can over budget. And say, okay, we're gonna apply for grants, we're gonna apply for whatever to get, bring that budget in line. But that's kind of why they people, they over budget, because you know you're gonna apply for grants, you're gonna get donations, you're gonna get, you know, different things. From different.
Yeah, but the but the danger is that they don't come in.
Yeah.
Right, and you've got a problem.
That's that's the problem.
As long as you can tie it to line items and say, okay, if that grant doesn't come in, we're gonna remove these. You know, these line items aren't gonna get.
Right, then that's where your reappropriation.
That's right. And then there has to be special session and all of that if we reappropriate funds.
Are there any also, um, the old, I don't really get all the bills, so.
I've.
Any outstanding collections that we haven't received that?
We do have some B-poles out there that we're gonna get on to. I have about eleven thousand dollars out there that we've got to collect. Um, as far as our meals tax, everybody's right on time. Um, we've been doing very good with that. I did find out, I had got that second check from.
The county?
The county, and Troy, Mr. Lane, got back to me today, and it is our money, so I am gonna put it. It's thirty three hundred dollars, and I'm gonna deposit that tomorrow.
Nice.
And I have all of his. Correspondence from when I started this. It's all getting attached together because I don't want him to.
Yeah, come back and say, wait a minute, that's not yours.
Like, uh-uh.
Way to go, Melanie.
So speaking about trends for meals tax, we're on trend for our projected revenue, which is two seventy five. Based on, and then I'm doing the math backwards because Melanie did the math for us. If we're eleven off, we're like at eighty four.
Yeah.
We're at eighty four thousand in B-pole collective. This year's budget is accounting for ninety two thousand. So if we can collect all, we're on track.
Yeah.
It's not gonna show up in the January because it all landed February, March.
Right.
But as you go through your financial statements through the year, that'll start showing itself. Beyond that, bank franchise comes in right around May at the last moment, and we expect to be a little bit higher than what we projected. So from fifty to sixty two.
We worked on the USDA grant, that's what we got the car with.
That's the vehicle.
The vehicle grant.
Oh, we got that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
There's nothing big coming in besides.
Yeah, so what we did, what, February and March was pay off all the bills. And what I would like, well, I'll pitch this now, I need some help catching up on our grants, like I I either a committee or. I need to record out and pull that money back in. So as Greg knows, um, we need to do an inspection with them, send all invoices, and then just pull that reimbursement in. And, uh, since July first, I've been kind of expressing that what I'd like to do is pull in that grant money, so we start off on a fresh budget with a new council and staff members. Uh, in new positions.
How much do we do with all of that?
Um, it ends up being more than seventy thousand. Um, yeah, so that's.
So you need help with, you know, practice or?
I have it all together. It's reporting it out, which has been very tedious with the housing brand. Um. If one would sit down and work at it as a discrete project, that would be helpful.
True.
Yeah.
You should do a model of it. That'd be great. Yeah, seventy thousand is a lot of money.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments about the financial statement for January?
I have a quick question about it. So I know the received from town, it's. Throughout the year, like, you know, you know, taxing our tax on up. The the state one, is that the same? We'll be receiving that throughout the year?
So state is most, I never get the detail. So state ends up seeing sales packs and then a few different grants. So, for example, on page five. If you look about a third of the way down, you have receipts from state. So sales tax is supposed to come in monthly, um, which they've been, uh, much more consistent now. Uh, thanks to Melanie. Um, when you go down in our budget, you get law enforcement assistance, which is our five nine line. So it's a program where we receive, uh, revenue quarterly. Um, beyond that, we have some leftover DMV select service fees, so the last fees from June landed in July. And then our communications tax is a monthly tax that comes in.
Um, so the fact that we're only at thirty four percent halfway through the year is nothing to worry about. You think we'll hope that?
Yeah, that's some delayed, uh, sales tax probably. Where I would have to from, because this adds through January. And I think we started getting some of them in February, is what my timing. And then there might be a missing ten nine nine, um, that will come in consistently, but it might be a month over. Good question.
Any other questions or comments? I want to make one team that removed the financial statement for here.
Here, Dan Britzko.
Yes.
Mary Klein.
Yes.
So I said. Aline Morris.
Yes.
And Mr. Page.
So, um, Javier is gonna sort of run the rest of the show, but we just, uh, what I wanted to keep in mind is. Uh, that this is our first meeting on this. We will have a special meeting, post-work session in April, May, and if you. If we haven't got it ready for both by June, we will have a special meeting. Yeah, we will be meeting once a month, especially if we just talk about nothing we play. So. Listen to Javier. If you have questions or comments for his presentation, he will be glad to address them. See now, he's spent several hours on this thing. And, um, I've seen the presentation, and then we can get into discussion, but we're not. Pulling things out and putting things in, we're discussing about what we think maybe we can go here and go there. We're not making hard decisions tonight. So it's a general discussion on anything Javier reports in his photo strategy. We're waiting to do that. We just discussed this information in fact.
Yeah, so. So productive, but Javier. Yeah, so productive meeting might be going over this information and then, uh, providing staff with some questions and some direction. Um, so then I can do staff work and then come back to you guys, and then we make it an iterative iterative process between both of us. Um, so we kind of covered item three, uh, already, which I wanted to play some patch up and talk about this fiscal year. So I want to thank Melanie because I think, uh, January's financial statement covered that pretty well, revealing it. Um, beyond that, I have two items. I have a scenario that holds, um, that takes into account. The request for the police department with staff increases, looks at operational projections I've made of things that have gone up in price, things that have gone down. And I have a second presentation on scenarios for revenue, specifically some research on a real estate tax. Now, I want to take a step back from those two presentations, and first I had a quick conversation with you about process. And I thought it might be useful if we go over what the federal process is and see what I touched upon. And what might be a gap in my process this year. So short and sweet, I touched with base with all our staff around this budget. Um, to work through it, um, as I started to try to look at this year and try to trend out what our expenses and our revenue looks like. And then also looked at the last years and compared both of those to try to get some kind of stable footing at least on. Um, I want to be clear, well, I got some other information here and there, but maybe we talk about that, and then the second order question is, which one do you want to jump into first? Both can dovetail into each other. I can, I have a way of probably leaning us from one conversation to the other, once I go through both of the presentations.
I think you wanted, I would suggest you cover the budget first versus the funding, so.
Okay.
That's my suggestion.
So, um, let's first touch process.
Again, process?
Yeah. So before I hop into that, um, as we talk about process, we'll follow up with budget and then talk about revenue discussions.
Well, the budget process, I thought it might be helpful for us to kind of look at what the federal government does to their budget process. And overlay our process on top of it so that we know what to expect. And there are opportunities to do things maybe a little differently than we have done in the past and not sort of highlight that, and you all can comment what you think about this process. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, to your point, we're gonna need probably multiple sessions monthly, but I think it might be good that to go through that. Yeah. I found that this chart, um, very simple about the, um, federal budget process. I know that we had questions on appropriation versus approvals and about things like that, so this is a really simple, and I'll go through it really quick. But you can see, if you start at the top here, what happens at the federal level if each of the agencies submits their budgets for review? So that goes actually, this arrow that goes to the president and submits the budget request, but. That actually goes to a office called the Office of Management and Budget, and O M B actually brings all of this together and makes sure it's a nice cohesive package. That everybody, that they're all jotted and tees frost, and if there are strategic priorities that the administration wants to see. Where people are highlighting that those things are annotated in that process and whatnot. So, um, then that is submitted to the president. The president then submits that to Congress. That goes into various committees. These are appropriations committees. So the budget that gets submitted is more like, this is what we foresee as our expenses and our wish list for the coming year, right, sometimes two. Um, the appropriations committees are probably some of the most coveted positions in Congress because who controls the first string actually has a lot of talent, right? But what the appropriation says is actually is the authority of the agency, once money is appropriated to write checks. And the US Treasury grants, um, a guarantee that the US government's gonna pay those, right? So that's what appropriation is. The budget process is totally different. So you may submit something, you may not get the approval and the funding to go with it. So it's a two-step process. We're kind of, you know, we marry things a little bit closer together. Um, in the budgetary formulation and approval process, it's not as clear delineation, but in Congress, it's actually very clear. There are sometimes conditional approvals, so they will appropriate the money, they'll tag it. But Melody sent out, uh, an email about the difference of appropriations versus approvals. Sometimes they will require a secondary approval. We've done that this past year with discretionary spending in certain areas. Because there was the concern of a lack of transparency in those areas, though it's not unlike what happens at the federal level. And then it goes to the president who vetoes or signs that into law. So if we overlay our process in that, right now, what Javier is doing is similar to what the federal agencies do on top. Chief Jenkins is getting his budget together as a quasi-agency, you know, a town agency. Javier has looked at, um. At staff, I'm assuming Caitlin's been involved with farmers market and things like that. The one thing I wanted to point out here is that I think there's an opportunity for us to actually get input a little bit more broadly from staff. So, for example, planning commission, I think, would have some good input into some of the line items. I had a a great conversation when we had the kids in, uh, with Shannon, who talked about some parks and trails types of things. And some ideas that she had that I I thought were actually really good and maybe not a lot of money. So I think there could be opportunities for us not to just to talk to town staff, but other things. I know E P C has some. Um, you might have, Meredith, some requests for events, like, I'd like to see this budget. And it would be nice if there's some accountability there. So we all just don't throw it back on Javier, but that people are actually looking at these line items just in a way Chief Jenkins does. So he's responsible for the budget in his area, right, that we have a point person in events who says, okay, I'm going to manage the. Events budget and the work to do that and things like that. So we have an opportunity to make some changes there potentially, depending on how you all feel about that. Um, Javier acts as O M B. He sort of collates all this stuff what he's sent tonight, puts it all together in a package. And then it goes to the mayor who, uh, works with Javier, so he's the quasi-president here in this graphic. And submits it to Congress, which is really town council. Now, I know we've talked about having committees involved, certainly E P C has a wish list, the things that they'd like to see. Um, I know, Bill, you have talked about government services looking at the budget. Um, I'm I'm a little bit. I'm a little bit hesitant to have. An agency, you know, a a committee look outside at the overall budget because there's no. I mean, they're not part of the government, right? But I think there certainly should be input from government services into the into the budget process. And I think there's some other opportunities where I think we could actually leverage government services a lot more broadly. Right, but maintenance, I mean, there's a lot of talk about maintenance. So in addition, Jan is very new. The government services had a lot of opinions on maintenance. So this is where I think the dialogue could be more broad in the process, right? And then hopefully this year, we wouldn't have to go through approval of those line items that we would give full authority to Javier to manage that. The one problem with that, Melody, this comes to you, is getting these monthly budgets on time. And I know you've said that once you get caught up, we should be able to do that, because I think if we can get budgets versus actual every month. Then we don't have to worry about, is there spend going on that we don't understand or aren't involved with and whatnot, right? Um, so the whole point of this, the more people that are involved in inputting upfront. The more choices that we'll have to make in the budgetary process. So if Meredith comes and says, well, I'd like to see a line item for F Y D in the budget, and E P C says this, and maintenance says this. Maybe there are some things that come in from planning commission and their work with the comp plan things in terms of capital, true capital improvements. Then we have a discussion about choices, right? Do we want to add things? Do we want to take things away? Do we not have a propensity to make any movements at all? And I think that's the real important point in the discussion, is the trade-offs and the choices. And then it goes into Javier's scenarios. So do you want to. Increase certain things? Do you want to decrease certain things? What do we do about other problems? And that's where the real, I think, power in the dialogue is. So, um, I think if we s- we look at these more discreetly, and just like this big budget discussion. That should be a step-by-step process, then I think we'll have more choices in there. So that's, that was sort of the lead-in that I have to shoot. I mean, oh, the other thing I did want to mention, and I'll refresh. I'll pass these around. I'll refresh your memory on our strategic priorities that we did in the strategic plan. One of the things where the strategic plan could be really useful is a lens to view these line items when we make these choices. Because let's say we have a line item, Meredith puts something that touches three of these priorities. And maybe maintenance only touches one. That might give us a little bit more weight than Meredith would put forward. So I would say that we should use the strategic priorities in our discussions moving forward on what we need to spend money on. This would be more probably in capital improvements than in operations. But, um, I think it's a helpful lens to to, uh, view these choices that we would make in a budgetary process.
So maybe an open question and something to think about while we go through tonight is what can we do at least this year in regards to process and some direction coming out? And then, of course, Ali's giving you a conversation about what processes do you want to work with me about budget in the future? So. Big open-ended question, but.
But to Ron's point, it's, you know, this is the first of many, so.
I get a bunch of information about that will be processing instead of sleeping.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that was part of the book, you know, so. What, how do we go about actually spending the money we have, but what are some of the priorities we need right now? Uh, but I think we're talking about next year more.
Yeah, this is next year.
So it'd be good to go, because there's some deals being spread out in town that if you go to get approval of, and I'm not sure how to go about doing that.
But that, you know, that's. If you have a meeting and we're talking about the budget, see what's left and not accounted, what you can do.
If it's not budgeted.
If it's not budgeted, it's not gonna happen before July first.
That's why it's important to have these discussions now, because if you can't get it done in this fiscal year. You would push it off and say, okay, it's on my wish list for next year. Then it goes into the bucket. And everybody is competing, all of the staff requests and other things, everybody's competing for that pot of money. And then you have a decision. Are we gonna increase the pot of money? Are we gonna decrease the pot of money? Are we gonna keep the pot of money flat, right? So those are the discussions that we're gonna have.
So if I lost something for this year, I would go and maybe you look at the budget and say, I don't use.
I don't think it's as simple as that, no.
See if it's in the budget and see if that's. I think the most straightforward and transparent way would be for us to present like a February financial statement. And then discuss, hey, these are, these are the items that have already been appropriated, and I have, um. And I just need to allocate money to it as a priority. And that could be a conversation, that would be in a small town like us, a good conversation to have with council. Um, and then we still have those, uh, three items that, uh, require additional approval from you guys.
Yeah, the parks, Van Cleve.
Uh, Parks, Van Cleve, and Communities Sport or Community, uh.
Yeah. Advocacy.
Yes, community something, yeah. Um, the easiest thing might be to February work session, discuss that. And that gives you enough time to get quotes out, uh, before June thirtieth. Oh, sorry, February, I'm losing my.
That's the, that's the.
April.
That's the, oh.
Yeah, April, and then I have about two months to work on my quotes that I need to come back. Um, and then wrap up any projects before the June thirtieth fiscal year.
But it's important to note, now, we've had this discussion before about what's those line items, or our gut money has already been appropriated.
Yes.
Right, so that's, that's already been bucketized as saying, we're gonna spend this amount of money in this category, whether it's. Uh, community, whether it's parks and rec, whether it's whatever, being for those three areas. Then the the question is, what comes before you is how we spend, right? So it can't be fungible. So if we don't want to spend from one bucket, we can't necessarily just move it to the other bucket without re-appropriating.
So that'll stand through that.
Um, one would hope it would get spent. You would say, next year, we don't want this, but this year it's already been tabbed, which is, so we'll spend this year and not budget for next.
Well, what I'm saying, my thing is, for now, nine thousand.
Okay.
We don't need nine thousand. So we need four, five thousand, and the other five thousand would go where?
Well, you could re-appropriate it.
Oh, we, oh, we budget it. Yeah, all this time, if it, if, if, what the decision was that we spent nine thousand dollars on parks, we need to find a way to spend it.
That's not.
That's what I. That's not how budgets work with, like, Melody's, yes, but Melody. That's just how budgets work.
Yeah, it's not as fungible, I should think.
Because like what Melody said, if they come in and get audited and say, you, you appropriate all this money every year. For for these things, and then you don't spend it. Why? Why? You you had a, you had a, let me finish. You had a meeting with the public. You said, this is what our budget is. We are gonna spend nine thousand dollars on these parks this year.
Right.
That was what we told the public, that's what we told the taxpayers, this is what we're gonna do, we do it. I- i- if we keep saying, this is what we're gonna spend on this, this is what we're gonna spend on that, and then we tighten purse strings and we don't, we've already announced this to the town. we've already announced this to the town, to our people who elected us, that this is what we're gonna do. They say, you, you said you were gonna spend nine thousand dollars improving the parks, and then you didn't.
But we still need X, Y, Z, right? Signs or brochures, how come we didn't spend?
So we come up with, okay, we need this much next year. And next year comes and then we decide, well, we don't need that much. We're just projecting, we may need that, and then if there's new needs, or we need this more, that place, we need this more than two for that.
Re-appropriate, you don't put it back into the general budget. That's how much it's worth.
Once you set that budget, that budget, once you guys, the budget's done, we have our last meeting, and you guys set it in stone.
Right.
The only way to get something out of one bucket into another bucket is to re-appropriate it. And then to, then you all have to have your hearings, let the, the public know, say, hey.
Advertising, special meetings, we have to come together and vote on.
Oh, it's not like we're predicting fifty years to the future. One year in the future, we know.
But that nine thousand dollars must have come from somewhere. It wasn't just made up, right? I'm assuming that it has some function where it said, well, we want signs, we want brochures, we want this, we want that. And the estimate for that is about nine thousand dollars, right? That's what you would do. So I think maybe going back to looking, see, oh, how does that nine thousand dollars, uh, would, might be helpful?
Yeah, one of the, one of the things I'm gonna say, I was gonna say this more later, but I'll say it somewhat in response to you, Council Heisen, is so when I think of next year's budget, I think of it in three categories. One category is, what do we do if we wanted to maintain the same level of service that we give the town? So in other words, if our goal is to give the same level of police, the same level of maintenance, the same level of administrative support, then we would come up with a budget that funds that. One, so, so that to me is, so when we think about the next couple of months, I would like to say, okay, what is a budget that covers the basic costs of the town that should take into that account? A secondary budget I would like to see would be, what would a budget look like if we were to increase services to the town? If we were to do some things, so in other words, to use your example, if we said, we are trying to fund a new access point, we wanna make something ADA accessible, we wanna make, I'm talking about the park, we wanna put in a new doc. Example, so, so we're trying to increase what we offer the town, which is a valid discussion. Do we improve the equipment the police have? Do we improve the signage? So what do we do if we were to go that direction? So, so in other words, how do we add more service? And then the other one I would like to see is, okay, what would it look like if we said, we actually have to decrease what we offer as a town? We have to decrease our services. What would that look like if we said we have to drop one percent or three percent or five percent? What would we actually do if we did that? And the reason my suggestion would be that we look at these three categories, the maintenance, but the maintain the town, to increase or to decrease, is it kind of answers that question. Why do we allocate nine thousand dollars? Well, we allocate nine thousand dollars, using an example going forward, because we're trying to increase service, to maintain service, or actually that might be a decrease of what we offered the previous year. So as we frame our conversation and we look at the, the data, in the future, we wanna know if that nine thousand dollars there really means something. We wanna know that, and if it means something, what was it put in there for? The other part of it would be, it's not illegitimate, we've done it a number of times over the years, we will reallocate the funds. We will, okay, let's just say that you, let's just say the nine thousand dollars this year, nobody really had a good reason for it, I think they just happened to be there. That's a reason to reallocate if we had to, and that's a conversation we would have as a council too, if we did that. Again, at the moment, I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm saying, what we do coming into the budget for next year, we have to make those decisions. And then, once we make those decisions of, are we trying to increase, maintain, or decrease, then the question also comes into having fun with that. And, and the funding part of it, so the funding part, it also gets into, there's different considerations.
Okay, so we got nine thousand for the bucket, we gotta stretch, we lock it in. So I, I go to my committee and say, we have nine thousand dollars, what do you wanna do? So we can just come up with anything, so, I mean, I.
Well, then it comes back, it's all for approved.
Well, to me, I mean, we could say, okay, we want more trees, okay, we want some birdhouses. We want some, we want some flowers. And we could, we just, just do that, right? So we have to really, we're trying to scramble to get a road there, you know, and you don't have. But we, we could, we, we could spend.
But you can spend it on other things.
We could buy a part of the road, okay, okay, so, okay, we'll do that.
You don't have nine thousand dollars, you already spent fifty two hundred, you got thirty seven hundred dollars left out of your nine thousand. I can find that you, that's not gonna be enough. You say, I would like to save parks up to twelve thousand.
Oh, I see, okay.
You've already spent, you've already.
Maybe you could guess, I don't, I don't know.
So you spent that few minutes for some of your budget already on parks.
But you know, we, we, we got the plan with this.
I, I, I'm still, I'm still confused on this.
For the parks, maybe you could give us what.
So page nine of eleven, in your small sheet, right here.
We're mixing up the capital amount with the operating for parks.
See, that should be, that should be split though, right? We shouldn't have operating costs with capital costs.
So look at page.
And Melody, that's maybe where you can help us in the future, is that we need to, in, in the, in the federal budget process, there's two categories. There's mandatory and discretionary. Mandatory is keeping the lights on, keeping things running, right? And discretionary is everything else. We don't have that. So I think one of the changes that we could make, maybe even in some small way, is to separate up our capital spend from our operational spend.
So the we, we wanna look at page seven, line. Ten fifty one seventy, and that's your Van Cleve capital improvement. And that's the nine thousand zero dollars. But to the point, our financial statements can sometimes be elaborate.
Yeah, but see, this needs to be clarified, Javier, because it's very difficult, right? So this is a good example of where we're initially thinking there's nine thousand dollars in that bucket, and really to Ron's point, there's not nine thousand dollars.
No, this line has zero dollars.
So it hasn't been filled.
So there's nine thousand dollars of capital.
And that was the, that was the approval part.
Right, so you have to put your package together, bring it back to council.
But, but okay, so we can, so we got that lot of dollars, so, okay, I'm sure people, that's my idea, some bluebird houses.
Well, and Shannon had a good idea, so the heart, we should check in, you know, because she had a really, I thought a great idea. She talked about having like a bluebird trail, so a bluebird trail like through town for kids, where it has birdhouses for bluebirds and things like that.
So that would be on the streets or that would.
Well, that would be sort of, it would be a new trail, like through town. But to the point of birdhouses.
So the big one.
All right, now we're on the big one.
All right, so let's, let's start off with the front page. So I wanna be clear that at the draft, I put in bold draft, and also proposed scenario. So as a starting off.
Okay, so can I ask a question? You say, proposed draft, so this is your proposed baseline for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five?
Yes.
And it, does it include new stuff, or is it just what we have, but costed for next year?
Yes, so primarily what we have is a solid projection on revenue, which we use as a baseline to discuss expenses, to balance a budget.
Right.
And then what I have done short and sweet is, I spoke with, I, I did research, spoke with staff members, looked at the last two, this year and last years, and tried to do some projections on expenses. So essentially, this is an operating budget.
Okay.
The major caveat that you'll notice is that I've heard the most discussion about parks and trails and capital. Well, and also the police salary, but that, that fits into this scenario here.
Well, but see, here's where my point about having everybody's wishlist on the table, right? Because other committees, I know E P C has a request to be put in here. So it would be nice if we're going down D N's scenario, we're putting new things in, that everybody puts their new things on the table, right? And that we're able to say, okay, this is our base budget. If we add these new things, this is what the budget looks like, right? And that there's not enough revenue potentially to cover it, where does that revenue come from? Or do we wanna do these three things and cut something else? Do you see what I'm saying? Not everybody's wishlist is on the table.
Javier, one thing that I, that I don't think you and I discussed when we were talking about the police department's numbers was a a two or a three percent, and we were talking about that in the beginning, when we started here. We didn't talk about any pay increases for the officers in the new budget coming up. And so maybe this is a, a good time to, to tell everyone, but it looks like we're gonna be able to fill the position, the vacant police position of sergeant officer. So my thought is, my recommendation, my suggestion would be keeping in, keeping in line with market values for officers. I would suggest like that McHenry and some of the other jurisdictions do with a, a, a pay scale. I would, I would suggest that maybe town council consider each year at a minimum of a two percent increase, not for the chief, but for the officers that are in the department. So we stay competitive in paid salary for our officers.
Two percent doesn't even seem right, I mean, I mean.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that a minimum, we each year budget a two percent minimum.
Yeah, so, so what you're suggesting is part of our baseline budget would include a two, three percent rate. And then to your point, Meredith, we could look at higher lines on top of that. But at least what the chief is proposing, if I understand you correctly, chief, is that that should be built into our base budget every year.
And that's, that's the minimum.
I think that should be salaries across the board, quite frankly, not just. Well, fifty three percent is like a COLA increase, right? It's not a merit increase. That's on top of it, and we're talking even at the police level. To Meredith's point, we should consider potentially more, depending on what the budget looks like in any given year and what inflation costs.
Any, any kind of corporate job I've ever had a five percent raise as standard before?
Yeah.
I'm just kind of going by where I come from, when they implemented the pay scale, the county made it a point that every year, an, an officer, a sworn personnel would guarantee a two percent increase on that pay scale. So they could project out thirty years of what they're coming into the organization, what they can map out thirty years in progress of pay.
Right.
Sergeant, all the way up to.
And you can get some sense of what your pension would look like, or stuff like that.
I know we didn't talk about the two percent, and I don't think it reflects in that police department budget, how many?
No.
But I think moving forward, I, I would, I would, I would suggest that we, that we at least factor into that number for the police department, at least a two percent standard. And then if we find that council wants to do more than the two percent.
If we have enough revenue.
Then we, council has the ability to increase it, but I would suggest that we start factoring in two percent minimum.
And I think that's, I think that should be a stat line, so this is one wishlist on the table, right? One of those things into the process.
I mean, these values have, we, have done it, reappropriation, when they've had surplus, engagement.
But you do have to go.
Is essentially, you know, public money.
But just remember, bonuses don't go towards pensions. And when we talk about benefit, paying benefits to attract and keep people, then I would suggest that we look at those things, instead, bonuses are nice, but they're a one time thing in the box.
Right, and they don't contribute to your pension.
They don't contribute to an officer or a staff member who is in V R S pensions.
So let me ask, this two eighty grade, does that include the pay increases that we discussed?
Yes, so.
Last week at least.
Let's jump over to page. I'm sorry, Javier, I didn't mean to throw it off.
No, I think it's appropriate, but I do think that should be called a stat thing, two to three percent across the board.
So that, to not add, um, yes. Yeah, that, that's included, so if you look at page six, start looking about a third of the way down, we have payroll. I couldn't figure out how to number it, it was a, I know.
All right, which page does six look like?
As police department, so police.
Okay, got it, I'm tracking.
So, a third of the way down, I split out payroll expenses, made it a little bit easier to track.
Yeah.
So when you have a, so you can take a look at payroll, police chief, and the furthest column to the right has that pay increase we discussed, what, last week?
Yeah.
And then the two base salary right under it, that is the increased salary we discussed last week.
Okay.
And then the sergeant is included there, the part time. So for example, if you do a two percent on the full, uh, staff members, point two, you reach, uh, one hundred and four hundred.
Or on staff, unless you're counting the chief, that's part of staff.
Yes.
So I think it's important for me, just, I really think it's important that we, that I take, make sure that I take care of my officers, and that we can take care of them.
Right, but we have to take care of our.
Yeah.
I understand.
We appreciate that, that you wanna take care of them, we also wanna take care of you.
I'm right with you now. So I think that two percent, three percent, whatever we agree on, should be a part of the.
Yeah, it, it, we, you will not be taken care of at the expense of your officers. We'll make sure that gets done also, but we don't want that little expense. Or I don't, anyway, I should speak for everyone.
I concur.
You speak well, so it would, it would just be one thousand, one hundred, uh, two thousand and forty dollars for full time, and then four hundred and fifty for a sergeant.
With what, the three percent or two percent?
Two percent for everyone in the department.
If we make a list.
We need the wish.
I, I'm, not even, just like, with two percent increase, like.
Yes.
Can, can I email the list to you tomorrow, so that the next time we have this one, we have a revised one with all the. Can, can I email the list to you tomorrow so that the next time we have this one, we have a revised one with all the things? I'll just take notes then while we, while we talk.
Yeah, because I have some things to add in to.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sorry that I threw you off, Javier. No, no, we didn't mention it before. Through this thing, I apologize, but I thought.
This is the whole point of this process.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking for guidance, right? This is guidance that we'd like to build in at two to three percent again.
One of the things that helps with the police department budget that we found today.
Yes, around four.
Yeah, around four o'clock. Um. I just hope I'm helping you with health insurance. And if you look on down under health benefits. Last year or this year, we were at thirty two thousand dollars. For health benefits for your. Patrols.
Which is, okay.
Yes, same page.
I see the health benefit, right? Local choice plan for full-time officers.
If you look, it was eighteen five the year.
Wow.
Okay. Well, we're gonna have to reappropriate money because I found the error. What happened was instead of. Splitting out. The money that we pay.
This is the money that.
And the money that the employees pay, they were expensing everything. Just shoving it all in there and expensing it. Nobody knew any better. The money that the employee pays should be going to a receivable. Because that is pulled out of his paycheck.
Right.
Well, it's setting in a payable account somewhere that I have to take out and, and move to. This expense bucket. So instead of your. Health insurance budget being thirty two thousand, it should only be like eighteen five. So we're picking up money there.
That could fund the two percent.
Fund your two percent.
That's great.
And that's why on top column, we see from one, two ninety five. To two eighty three.
Right.
Even with me taking careful consideration for price increases, for, you know, gas went up, wages went up. Uh, paper went up, we know that.
Yeah.
Um, so this operating budget for the police department, at least with the communication of Adal's brand. Up to what five minutes ago.
Um, I apologize.
Yeah, don't worry about it. Um, is, uh. Is reflecting of what I heard as input from him and his staff, or through you, I'm assuming his staff.
I think, I think it's become a reality for me when council made the decision. We all spoke and made the decision about that increase to try to get that certified officer on board. And when I reapproached some folks, it's like. You okay? So what's your, then it become like, then we got into the benefits part for insurance and things like that. Town's insurance is actually. As good or better than where they're coming from.
That's great.
Um, you know, some negotiating here and there, but I think at the end of the day. Uh. He's. If background shakes out, then that's going to be the person that I'm going to look to my.
That's a huge win for us. Really, so great.
And it made me think. Okay, so how do we keep competitive? And stay the course, uh, that, that we've, now we've got this momentum, how do we stay that course? You know, we're competitive with some other jurisdictions that are neighboring us. And, um, it was a pretty good feeling that council made this decision and it paid off. You know, I wasn't sure. Uh, we had five non-serious losses ago, and then we had the one serio. Anyway. I think if we can get through the background on, on this person, that this should be able to have them on, on board, I believe. So worked out very well.
The pepper, I go before they.
It wouldn't be out of the academy until November.
Now, this is such a win.
Yeah.
For the town.
So.
This, but I just want to say, sorry Javier, before we move off of this point. This two to three percent is equally as applicable to our town staff. I think we need to. Apply this across the board to all full-time town staff because. Even in the hiring process, we have to stay competitive with salaries. Outside of the town. We may be slightly lower overall. But we need to keep in that range. So there needs to be some kind of adjustment across the board. So this two to three percent. I'd say we build into all town staff.
One thing too, if you look down further in your street department. The same thing that was happening with. The police department with the health insurance was also happening to.
The maintenance.
Because Cody was on a. Family plan. So that family plan was coming out of his paycheck, but it wasn't going into that bucket.
So. I don't want this to be lost. I am extremely grateful for Melanie. For me to bring this up, it doesn't make sense. Then she explains it and then find this. This is.
Yeah.
Having a good. Person with good accounting background is something. Very important for us. Because I can work with them and we can bat these ideas off of and then we have a better budget for the things we need. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Great job, everyone. Okay, moving right along.
Yes, so. Some of it is, if you want the short and sweet. The same process that I had with the police department going through our different departments. It was looking at what, last year it was looking at what we left with actuals. And comparing that also to our six month. This year and then trying to project out, hey, what's gone up, what's stayed down, what stays insane. So essentially the short and sweet with this. Is that I feel pretty comfortable about quote-unquote operational costs. And pretty good about revenue. But what we might want to do is take a step back to the first page. And look at the big numbers and then dig back in. Yes, but I want to start.
You know, it's like capital improvement, what exactly, I was getting, we had some capital improvements last year.
Right.
So what are these capital improvements? Maybe you can find out what those are. What is community development mean? Um, and, and, uh, you know, if you, I mean, this building, it's like, what, um, what, what's that all about? And, uh. Who's the economic development? What's that about? You know, it's kind of what specifically, what is that all about?
That you'll see them when you go. Yeah, but when you, when you start going.
So, but I wanted to take a step back so we can do the big picture. And then we can run through, and I think I can address some of the questions you still had as I run through the presentation. So. In regards to that right column on page one, on first page. Um. Pretty simple revenue from. Uh, for twenty four, twenty five, I have that seven, six, seven, nine hundred.
Right.
So that is a, about a ten thousand increase from last year, eleven thousand. Uh, or from, sorry, from this fiscal year. Projected. Um. In regards to that, you can see that it breaks down, a majority of our taxes are from the town. We get a portion from the county. We get revenue that we discussed in financial statement previously from, from the state. And then, uh, we sometimes get federal and then our, uh, return on investment has been stronger. That's our LGIP accounts. Um, just a higher interest rates just meant we. Uh, return more higher dividends. Um, beyond that. Uh, going down to expenditures, what I have is a. Compared to this year, seven forty three, a seven forty two. Um, the major. The major thing I want you to note is at the bottom, what I have is a reserve fund on this scenario. Of twenty five thousand. But that does not include. Due to discussions I've heard from council before. Um. Decisions made on parks and trails and on capital improvement projects. So I felt like I had my nose close enough. To operational costs to be able to project that. And give a, a good baseline, but the major discussions I've heard from council has been. Uh, discussions about capital, parks and trails. So I wanted to take that out and.
But there's more than that, right? So I, you know. Phil mentioned community development. There's a lot of zeros in these columns.
Yes.
Um, so that's a change from this year, right?
Yes.
So you made that change.
Yes, so I'm going to run through those changes. Um. In detail.
Okay, so we're going to take this column by column, like heading by heading and go through that, Javier?
Yes, if that helps.
Yep, it would help to say what's been changed. And that's not a baseline then.
Yes.
That's a change.
So page two with revenue. We can start with that.
Alright.
So. On revenue for federal government, um. This year we have zero. Um, from previous years, we had affairs in our department.
Right.
Department of Justice grants and then community facilities grant, which we use for, uh, police vehicles in the past. So then we can jump to revenue of state, which I have a hundred and four and two hundred dollars. Um, the major or the items to touch upon is a pretty standard boilerplate DQ litter grant we receive. Um, we were, we are pass-through. For a grant for the volunteer fire department, that's that fifteen thousand you see there. Um, the sixteen thousand is our quarterly five ninety nine law enforcement grants. Um, then we have a fifty nine thousand projection for sales tax. Um, twelve thousand for communications. And then the nineteen thousand revenue. Is specifically stated as the A. DCJS, so that's that jack grant we've been talking about the last three, four weeks.
Is that the one that you just put in?
Yes.
That the chief just put in?
Yeah.
Okay. So we think we have a good chance again.
Um. Actually don't know.
It's a competitive grant, two million dollars statewide. We may, we may not.
Well, I think it's. I think it's questionable to put that in there then if it's not.
But I, I can't leave it out. If, if we are hopeful for next fiscal year, it come in. So probably a good discussion about. How careful you guys want to be.
Well, exactly. And that, so if we don't get that nineteen thousand, then what happens?
Yeah.
Then we don't spend the money. We don't get the message board, we don't get the trailer.
As long as it's been allocated that way, then it's.
But we have to allocate.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Allocate because if. It's a, it's a buy first, reverse later type of, of a grant, so we would have to have the money budgeted. So we can.
The same thing with the car, right? Yeah, we budget for it and then it either comes through or it doesn't, yes.
Core games tap, they, they. I guess they voted to put them back in.
Which one? I'm sorry?
The skill games or whatever. Yeah.
But they haven't decided what the modalities to get anything from them.
That's what I was gonna.
We used to have them over at Tavern, we did.
Oh, really?
Yep.
They had them at the, at Lucky's too.
Yeah, they have Lucky's, they have them all around.
And they all dispaired of those lawsuits and then now the. Company has put them back, but they haven't decided about the share, revenue sharing with.
Alright, and they still haven't figured out. You know, we have to pay five cents or whatever it is for the plastic bags. We still haven't got anything on that either. And Abrahar County still doesn't know how they're going to release the funds. And how they're going to keep track of it.
So counties are supposed to use it for environmental projects. Uh, general assembly like two months ago was seeing, they passed. There were discussions about our law to see if towns could have some kind of discretionary, or could have some spending from that. Um, but.
And since we're the only tad on tomorrow, it's probably not too keen.
Well, and you know, to be fair, it is a, it's probably a big overhead on their part to. Take their tax and then say, okay, how much of this should Scottville get, right? So.
I don't think it is. I think when it comes in, they're, they're getting it from each individual grocery store. So they'll say, what did we get from the Scottsville Food Line? Goes back to Scottsville, you know.
It's still extra bookkeeping.
Yeah, I mean, anything's extra bookkeeping, any tax or. You know.
Yeah.
Whatever they've been on is their.
It is actually bookkeeping, but I don't think it's hard.
No.
I think it'll come in with a form. This came in, oh, this month we got this much from Scottsville Food Line.
It should be.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Sometimes.
It's not like they're doing the math.
It's just like sales.
And stuff, they're looking at the form by consent.
Yeah.
So, um, speaking about revenue from the county, uh, we have a long-term, we've had a relationship where we receive twenty thousand a year. For dam expenses.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, that's part of the cost sharing with us maintaining a letting down here in dam. Um, the idea is if we take care of this part of town, the county was. Been willing to accept, uh.
It's like insurance for them.
Yeah.
We maintain it, then it's less likely something would go on that would require.
Yeah.
I'm watching.
And then revenue from town is probably the most interesting. Um, so. I have for business license, ninety three thousand. Uh, our business license on retail is very low. So I'm playing conservative with some concerns about if, if some local businesses close, even with some opening. Um, and the businesses that are recently coming in our retail, which is our lowest, uh, tax rate, I think, other than contractors. Um, cigarettes, from what I can tell from looking over our receivables this year and last year, I think are going to stay relatively flat. So, uh, yeah. It's, it's the cigarettes themselves, those stamps on the cigarette packs. And then, uh, for example, like the state takes cigars, if we get into details.
Yeah.
Um, so that stays relatively flat. The farmer's market, we had a small increase in fees. So I calculated that out with Caitlin. Um, and how many, uh, we expect to fill out for this, uh, this, uh, farmer's market season. Um, fines, um, I've been going back and forth, but Melanie suggests maybe we increase a little bit.
What defines all the what, the what, the difference?
Well, if, if, say the chief pulls somebody over for tickets or. Uh. Say a drug bust and the guy goes to jail, everything gets paid to Abrahar County. Then Abrahar sends it back.
People are, they won't see that like a ticket as much.
Not hard to find.
One thing I was kind of mentioned on, just on this front. Having been on council for a long time. Years ago, there was. It almost seemed. We were. Counting, you know, this much, we got this much from fines, this much, we got this much from, I mean, that was kind of the focus. I actually am much happier that we have approached some good policing this week. In other words, not that. Getting a fine. The sign of possible future policing, but I think the policing that you guys do is the best we've had and by far. Not, not trying to denigrate previous officers here, but simply said. It's. Encouraging to me that we do what we do. So I'm just mentioning on this point that. Yes, it's important for us to. Give citations, but we should never operate. I think some towns do.
You can.
But it's, if, if you're saying. But I, I want to say I'm glad we, we simply are, you're focused to the police. That's my point.
Thank you, David. But if you look in the actual for nineteen twenty, it was good.
What, at what?
I'll tell you what changed when, so when you had all of the criminal justice reforms, the general assembly went back in and made a lot of. Changes to state codes that didn't allow us to, to pull over folks for state inspections, let's say for. You know. Ten days over. Now it has to be the first day of the fourth month, same with registrations. It may.
First day of the fourth, you have four months to update.
Hey, good for now.
And now if I stop you for something that's a primary offense, then I'll charge you. But they, they made a lot of changes to the state codes that will limit, um, the. Police abilities to be able to pull. Side, citations for certain offenses. Um, and also you will recognize that our courts. Have taken a little bit different approach when it comes to suspending. Have taken a little bit different approach when it comes to suspended drivers. Infractions, if I charge someone for a dead inspection. If they comply with law, bring proof to court, dismissed. Driving suspended, the courts are gonna work with the offender, they're gonna really try to allow them to get their driver's licenses back. Dismissed. So a lot of things that we were getting convictions on, not getting convictions on now. So you will see those numbers are dropping, it's not that.
It's a shame, probably it's forty thousand dollars, but I think that's a good.
But budgets should never be set on crimes along.
It's important to the public record that fines are just a enforcement mechanism that you use for good policing. So we're educating, but it is not a revenue.
Right.
I'm just projecting.
Shouldn't be used as revenue.
Yes. I'm just projecting out what I probably expect next year.
But that, that's what, why you see some of the differences in your budget numbers over the past three years, four years. It's because of.
Well, one, one of the things I will say that I'm gonna say it's a dangerous line that we take as a state or people take. Because what ends up happening is when you, I mean, it's not anything that's complicated. This is just proven over, you know, a hundred years of policing. When you decrease the lowest crimes, you increase the highest, you know, that's true. That, and so we just have to walk, I mean, we don't control it, the state does, the state controls it. But when the laws are. Often when you pull somebody over, to go back to what you said, sometimes you're pulling somebody over and then they have something else, that's the point. The point of people who are violating on a low level, it's very common, they're violating on much higher. Well, that's something that is lost in the, in policing moving this direction. And that's something that, you know, you know, Chief, what's there? Again, I think Mary is pointing for Councilor Heinz, there are, if, if it was only on the low level, that, that'd be great. You know, in other words, if all we're doing is, is dropping the lower level of charges, then I think that's great. Unfortunately, that doesn't, it's not the way it works. And that's something too, but it, it's helpful to know, like you said, that in terms of where we are. Part of that is just in terms of the overall policing of the state in terms of where that ends up with us in the town. Some of this also is not even you, it's the county, if the county's involved, or the other counties are involved. I think in general, I'll go back to my point again, is I think Scottville has the best policing we've ever had right now. Anything we can do to be supportive right here, I think the whole council is supportive.
So, meals tax an increase from two seventy-five to two ninety-two.
That's projected with the new ones, you spelled, bigger, just guessing. We probably will get a lot from that. I mean, how do you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, as much as budgets are getting. Yeah, so, so, so not to get into. But not to get into the details, but I looked at what other franchises similar to Tiger. Were bringing in, and then I looked at what I thought, I looked at our restaurants. And then tried to calculate what kind of business and then anticipate a little bit of maybe. Competition pulling business from others, so.
I feel like a restaurant is so good, that's gonna bring in a lot.
I've spoken with Melanie about this, a county staff member for a little bit of advice on it, and then the mayor too, trying to. I, I found this to be the. I enjoyed it, but it was tough, trying, trying to put a finger, a number on it.
Just a comment on that, when we get into the next year. It would be good, be helpful to know as, as a couple of councils have noted. We see better responses than we anticipated, because now we know things are looking good, although it's a little bit tricky because we're seasonal also. You know, we, we have good summers and quiet winters, so to speak, although it's good to know that we have spicy new businesses.
I created a trend line, we might not get it tonight to show how our meals tax goes, but that might be fruitful. Especially if we do like a six month next year review, staying on time with our financial statements. And then we have kind of a, what's our state pathway through, what's our fifty percent? Beyond that, just to get miscellaneous was extremely high and I.
What is it?
A little bit, literally miscellaneous, so fees, somebody invoiced us too much and then they returned something back to us. I, you know, we rent an extra facility as a special favor, somebody drops a donation for. It's a, it's literally miscellaneous, it's, it's a catchall program. I don't expect, I never, I'm not really sure why the last budget process had eighteen.
Yeah.
Thousand's much more reasonable, with small fees coming in, so I, I feel pretty confident about that. We'll skip real estate because it's been, it's zero. Rental income is twenty-five thousand, so that's our, that's downstairs, that's our. In vague leave, our rental spray antennas. And then.
I mean, I think there needs to be, we pick up the trash, things like that.
They come in every so often, they happen to.
In fact, back when was it, like, ten years ago, they brought us this real great deal, we're gonna give you like. Four hundred thousand dollars and you, and that'll be it for the rest of our lives. And we said, no, we'd rather have the, whatever it is per month, per year, for the rest of our lives.
Last year, Ms. Carter worked on that. They came with the same proposal, we shared it with council. I think some volunteers discussed it, and I think even government services would be pointing out that. The, the buyout essentially what it is, it's much better to take the lump later. It, the incentive was if you need a lump, some amount, that was. It's set in the contract, I don't know when the term ends, but that's. Beyond that. Our rolling stock tax stays pretty flat. Our transit occupancy has increased, so the double sided of getting monthly now due to this General Assembly law. Means that I think we've had much more consistent enforcement for our returns. A little bit of a trend up, hoping that there might be one to three housing units come in this year. But it's not a major chunk of our revenue sources.
Do we have an update on that? Has there been any movement on that, do you mean?
Not yet, I talked to our neighbor yesterday in the Clarking lot, and it got on my head, so I'll reach out, just ask. Beyond that, we have our consumer utilities, our utility license tax, you know, vehicle license tax. Which I have found, of course, sitting pretty flat, but I'm gonna have Melanie double check and, and. Try to prove my hypothesis wrong, which would be helpful for us. Beyond that, we have our. The last item is our zoning permits. So unless we have a large SUP, most of our zoning permits end up being twin bucks here, twin bucks there through ARB.
Moving the needle.
Investment went up, but that's how you get to seven, six, seven and nine hundred dollars. Let me know how you wanna talk through this, I can talk all night about, about. So first, we're going through administrative lines, so to pick up from two seventeen to two twenty-six. Most of the first lines are increases I kind of expected. So, county service is just what we contract out, just to get advice hourly, you know, we have some issue with flipbooks. Advertising has gone up, that includes public notices, well, mostly public notices.
But we figured out that we don't have to keep spending as much as we have then, right, on the public notices?
Is that factored in?
Not yet, because you guys haven't made a policy decision on it, so. Yes, because the town code is a little bit more. Laborist in regards to public services, so when Jim last Wednesday, no, when Jim last work session discussed it. I wouldn't feel comfortable changing how we public notice without getting direction from town council.
Well, let's get that on the agenda.
So if, if that proceeds, that could be a number that changes. Our audits, year over year, increase slightly, it's not showing in this budget, but this is a reasonable expectation. I would like to shop out for some more audits. I think we could find a different. A competitive program.
It's probably good to do that from time to time anyway.
Yeah, so Melanie, from her background, has given me some resources and some people I could come out. I think our bank service charges go up a little bit, so that's just realistically addressed out.
But the highlights here that are significant, because most of it seems pretty, I mean, it's mostly looking inflationary.
Yeah, both, you know.
I don't know, do we need to go line by line through this, I'm not sure.
That's what I thought, maybe Javi Arigo was just.
Yeah.
The highlights, each category, then at home leisure, you look at all the restaurants, didn't even mark the mark, now the ones you have questions about and.
That's what I think would be productive.
Payroll got updated, I, I put in a proposal to increase a little bit for the clerk.
We should build in the two to three percent for all staff.
And that.
He's not full-time staff.
So, so to the point back in twenty nineteen, he was receiving nineteen fifty, and then we lowered his amount due to COVID. So then that eighteen was just trying to return back. I am open to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm slightly, I'm appreciative of that, of the assistance he gives. Payroll, you should look at the payroll amounts that got updated, health plans have changed. I get figures on retirement and healthcare, and then wage increases for those staff members. Included a big one, but I think we have good staff here in town. Beyond that, most of the lines are papers costing more, we're noticing, yeah, we're sending out more mail, et cetera, et cetera. Insurance goes up a little bit every year when you get premiums back. Next week, I'm gonna be quoting out the two premiums for our insurance and see what can come back with us for insurance. I can move into capital improvements.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that, administrative is a must have, we don't, we're not gonna say no to health insurance or paper, or you know, anything like that.
So if you wanna, we cover police, I've, I've got one thing here, Javi, I was going through your numbers here. Where it says professional development, the academy dues, six point per officer, remember that went to seven. One per officer.
Is that in the police line item?
Yes, ma'am.
Academy dues?
Academy dues, nothing, a hundred dollars if council remembers, I hope that changes back, they increased it by one hundred dollars.
Seven twenty, and then for how many? So it's for five of us?
Then under professional development, right?
Yes, yeah, so I, that's a, that's a typo there, but I counted, because we, we discussed, I counted it'd be thirty-six hundred. For the academy dues and then fourteen hundred, if you reach five thousand for, you know, a conference seminar, et cetera, et cetera.
So does that line item say five thousand?
The dollar amount stays same, description has a typo. Good catch.
Alright, so in capital improvements, can you give us the highlights for this? This is really the, the big one, but.
Yeah, so. I included two thousand because I think we desperately need some work on the farmer's market.
Yes.
I have five lights that are, have gotten knocked down, like those overhead lights. And they're just hanging by a wire.
Did Caitlin, did Caitlin say anything about? New opportunities besides, because that, that's not, again, I go back to capital spend versus capital improvement. I don't look at that as a capital improvement, that's just fixing what we've got, it takes capital, it's a capital expense. But it's not an improvement, do you know what I mean? Yeah, the routine maintenance.
Maybe that needs to be recovered, maintenance for, for the farmer's market.
So what?
I heard it needs to be fully sealed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, catch you up, I think yesterday, I was talking with Eddie, he isn't there unfortunately. About, I've been looking at the bottom of the post and it looks like it's starting. So, he sent me some people to just reach out to start thinking about it. I've literally, you know, called the guy, I got full smell yesterday, so you're on the phone of it.
If you look on the next page, there is a pavilion maintenance back there.
But that one should go in there then, the lights and. Yeah, the two thousand dollars if it's for lights should go into farmer's market maintenance, not capital improvements, right?
But I can do that.
That needs to be moved.
We have five thousand this year, have we spent anything on that this year? Or is that for the, is that for the, is that planned?
But hasn't been spent yet.
That's not in this.
Oh, so that's the donation, so we got ten thousand.
Five thousand in budgets for this past year with the company and who bonded us on the.
I heard you did, yeah. So we got ten thousand, so we could go ahead, if it's a donation, we could go ahead and spend that, really. I said, I guess we're still need approval, that really needs, that, I, I think that map is the priority. Forget the decent map up there, it's just terrible. And then if we look at those, those patterns and stuff like that.
So if I could get some approval or discussion work session.
Well, that would be good.
People are coming to that, we can see that, we can see that map, we can see that, that, that. Maybe to break the power too, but I think that's our only tools attack, actually, we got ten thousand now, let's screw it up.
Yeah, but you've also talked about barrels, I think that you do. I would put a list together, try to itemize it and then bring the whole thing as a package for approval, let's do one.
Somebody said you can get donations for barrels, they get a, but that, that's a good idea, I, there's a listing there for. I don't know what the prices are.
No, parking, I mean, approximation.
Yeah, and also be interesting is, we have a question on that. Just the talk to our, we have a relationship with the Alamo. What do they call it, tourism? What, what you really need there is some eyes for people who have tourism to see where you should put. Well, I'm, I'm saying it might be good to talk to somebody like them who would not have a vested interest, so to speak.
I think that's a great.
And to let them come and say, okay, if you're gonna spend money, this matters over that, or this is the priority of what ethics first. That would be, because it is, I mean, you could argue about the boats, you could argue about the feral, you could argue about the signs. Bottom line is, we wanna be mindful of what's the best way.
Can I, guys, I'm gonna sad horrible and get you here for a second. Can we make our work session for April, like our regular work session for April? A discussion about how to spend the rest of this year's budget, and then that way we can just kind of zip through next year's. Budget a little. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the major one is, I'll explain why there's thirty-seven thousand there, and then. Field a policy question to you guys. So, we are under agreement to do a thirty thousand savings each year for the dam. So our agreement for twenty thousand is to pull in three thousand.
Okay.
I'd like to do some accounting to make sure that's tracked really well.
There's a whole lot of zeros here.
Yes, so.
I have a quick question, I just wanna go back to what we were talking about with the capital improvements versus maintenance. So we put two thousand in the farmer's market. For paving, bird exclusion, minor repair. But then we also put three thousand in the pavilion maintenance. So do we actually need five thousand to do the maintenance? Is that what we're looking at?
You might with those posts, it depends on what they have to do.
It depends on what we want our priorities to be and timing over the years.
Okay.
Because you you could spend three thousand, you could spend three.
But see, this this goes back to the choices on the table, right? Do we wanna push off the post for another year and take it up in the next fiscal?
Not if they're rotten.
Right. I think it depends on how badly they're rotten. Wait, they're pretty bad, they're not that bad.
But the biggest problem is the paving, there's a big dollar, a little bit of water, but we need to prepare that.
Even if you fix them, if you don't fix the belly problem, we're gonna be facing this, yeah, so um root cause.
And then, and then. Do we wanna all take a, take a job? Like, I'll find out how much the sealer is for the rotten posts, and you can find out how much paving it, you know, like. So then we can, for our next meeting, we can all, we'll actually have a better idea of what it would cost. To do that. Yeah, I mean, it's hard, like, me personally.
That's why I say in the thing, maybe um Caveman should be the point person for farmer's market. And be looking at, I think sealer is about this much or this much and whatnot, and we can go to her for that. Not that we shouldn't have a role, but we could take other things.
I just do pay her so little, I mean that.
I don't think she'll do it.
No, no.
Yeah, it might be better either parts and.
We pay her more than we pay them.
Yeah, only because, like. I I wanna go ahead and fix what's wrong, everybody, but like the stuff that's wrong. You can tell me you need twenty thousand for it, and I have no way of knowing if that's right or wrong.
But see, here's your problem though, that, and this is why you need somebody close to the problem, because um. You know, you have to have somebody who estimates how much of each of these things. Let's say you're gonna seal all the posts. Right? You have to count the posts, you have to look at volume, I need five gallons, I need three gallons, I need, and that's. So it needs somebody experienced with that. It's not somebody like, this is how much the sealer is. It's how much sealer do I need at the unit cost for what it costs?
I mean, maintenance guy's pretty good.
That's right.
Was that what I had to give you numbers for?
Maybe work for the rotten posts.
Okay, you know, so yeah, just. Because I just don't know enough to to say, oh, that looks good.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a fair point.
So um, so beyond that, uh, the eight thousand is for the two car loans we'll have. Um, over twelve months, so I have to add the interest and then the monthly cost.
Where's that eight thousand?
Um, third from the bottom.
Oh, I got it, thanks.
Yeah. And then at the bottom, which I would like to split up later into grant line. Is our justice, our JAG rate, so that's the twenty-four hundred. That's there.
Yeah, I think, I think the the maintenance from the capital from the grants should all be split up.
Actually, there's a question on sidewalk, because there's a different sidewalk areas are problematic.
Sidewalks are massively expensive, but like.
There are lots of it, when somebody falls and breaks.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that, we, well, the thing would be. When I say massive, I mean, like, we don't go back to the grants, it's like, it takes like. Massive amounts of money.
That would be maintenance.
There might be hopeful.
But I think if we're separating this out into buckets, this one should go into potential grant bucket.
Uh, Jack.
Because, well, no, I'm talking about the sidewalks right now, because there's no way that we can.
We can't.
We can afford to repair all the sidewalks. So this should be, and we talked about this, a lot of these grants, and there are grants out there that aren't matching. And things like Main Street renovation, improvement of Main Street. Which sidewalks could go in, but what these grants want are shovel-ready projects. And that means you have to have costed everything out, you have to have approval from your governing bodies, you have to have people signed up for this. And you have to be ready to execute. And we, if we put this in a grant bucket, and we think it's a priority, then that work will have to be done beforehand.
So I talked with the mayor about this, um, wanna bring up the grant.
We will.
Um, so last fiscal year, if you guys remember, we canceled a grant due to cost overages.
With the cost over?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, sure.
So we had a lengthy process with the county, and the county donated. Uh, gave us sixty thousand as part of a lengthy legal process.
Hmm.
Um, we are still sitting on that, and there's an arrangement, there's no M U, but there was a discussion between. Uh, the town and the county.
Hmm.
So my thought is that next year, I don't think it's realistic, expect staff to be able to. Learn how to do a V-DOT grant, but maybe not this fiscal year coming up, but the following, start having discussions about that grant. Um, in the meantime, that gives us some liquidity, but I wanna be clear and on public record. Um, we should have a discussion about that sixty thousand, since it was part of an agreement we got with the county. Um, talk to Jim about this and with the mayor also.
Well, this, but it should stay in that category, right? That sixty thousand should be still used for sidewalks, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so.
Well. I mean, can't some sidewalks work be done with the sixty thousand already?
I would, I think so, man.
I think it's coming back to V-DOT and seeing what scope we can get for sixty thousand and, but this is a, this is a much bigger conversation than tonight.
I mean, if we can get them out there to see where some of these really big bumps are and stuff like that, that sixty thousand can go to fix some of the bigger problems. Where we can't get wheelchairs or walkers, or even their trip hazards.
Could we get V-DOT, I mean, I know government agencies work on their own, you know. It's a hard, it's a hard question to answer, could we get V-DOT out before we finalize this, but.
Um.
Well, the money's sort of there, right? It's just finalizing money and getting a project together, if I understand you correctly.
Yeah, and I think it's more realistic about twenty uh, twenty-four to twenty-five, but twenty-five to twenty-six.
To use the sixteen.
Yeah.
Sidewalk project, and all of a sudden it balloons out here from three hundred, you know, eighty thousand to four hundred. Crazy, sixty thousand might get you some preliminary plans.
Well, I know, I know it is way too, my, I I understand that it's way too much to. Put in sidewalks where there are no sidewalks, but as far as like.
Repairing.
You know, banging down what's already there and refilling it and smoothing it out.
How are we, so why can't we contract with a local contractor to do sidewalk work?
Right.
Yeah, that's.
Smooth it out and pour a new piece of concrete, that's what we're gonna get out here, but we're supposed to do the whole sidewalk, and they came along, just patched it in places. When we did streetscape. That's why we're seeing some blocks, different sizes and different colors and.
Yeah.
I know it's not gorgeous, but that doesn't bother me as much as the trip hazards and things like that.
But it'd be the same bad guy, you know, we're gonna be less hard about that.
Alright, move on.
Yeah, so to the point of big uh community development, I did take lower it to zero. But we have a surplus with this amount, so I want to have a discussion with you guys. As maybe towards the tail end, if I run through some of the items and then get to what I think is policy for you guys. Um, our fire department grant is going up from probably ten to fifteen, just because of whatever metric they use. But it's a pastor, but we have to show it.
But we have a match on it, but.
Well, which.
I think.
Seems like that we ought to support the fire department ourselves somehow, besides the.
I agree.
It's just like we've never developed, we think, we don't do a lot of them, but that's, that's really developed, yeah.
Well, but I think there is a bigger policy question that we're divided on, and that's. How do we think about community development? Like, we've had this agreement in the past. And I think that's a big question that should be on the table, because. It, it pains me personally to see all of these other comms near. Um, we, we do have organizations that are in the community that. That's right, cultivate community connections, you're absolutely.
How how their strategic priorities came back, saying we support the things in the town that we are happy to have, and one of those. Maybe something that nobody wants to support, but it's still an asset to the community.
Yeah, I I agree, and I think we need a big policy question on this to give you guidance to how to fill in those numbers. Right? So um. I think at the works, next work session or something, I think we need a policy discussion on community development.
What is it?
What is it? And, yeah, I'm more than.
And I think that's, that's for donations as well, for someone who's related to something that's already with the public. Waiting for that too, so public money, I think, uh, could be for the vital services, you know, and maybe a little bit for.
If you look at the president for other governments and think we could, no, those other governments do support different things in town. Yeah, but we shouldn't be, I mean, we should be aspiring to be that.
Non-accessible trailer of our community, there are people who can't use a community service. No, it's not.
No.
Okay. If you're gonna do something like that, there's certainly other areas that you do, can do community service, so anyhow, let's do a little while.
Yeah, so let's take that up as a policy question.
So I have a local agency for capital, that's a policy question for next work session.
Yeah.
And then, um, well, I can move into flood and emergency operations, so. Um, small increase really, because every two years we do a dam certification, so I penciled that amount in. Um, and then a little bit for electricity, which is a trend around all our departments, all our buildings. Um, municipal building, I have what I believe is a good budgeted amount for uh weekly. Cleaning on the schedule we have implemented right now. Um.
But these are not capital improvements, right?
No, this is just a municipal building, um.
Are you still under capital improvements?
No.
Okay. I haven't, okay.
Oh, I skipped a.
Well, I thought we were gonna come back to that.
Yeah.
The pavilion maintenance and stuff.
So, well, I guess we jump to the community development, so we talked about that. Farmer's market, I have seven thousand and three thousand there.
Okay.
I guess the discussion with you guys is, is that an appropriate amount, two thousand? And would that two thousand over to this line item?
I'd like to see, see what I'm not seeing in this budget is the, is the strategic perspective, right? It's that wish list, like, one can imagine, if we did this to the farmer's market. We could realize more revenue from the farmer's market, right? Let's say, let's say we put side wings on the building. Just as an example, we could get more vendors in there and could get more revenue. I'm not seeing that picture here. Uh, thi- this is not a strategic perspective on the budget. And so I wanna get to that point where we can have those choices, right? Because.
One other thing that's following your thought, I think, but just be, again, go back to what I said before. I think, I I think this is a maintenance budget, this, this budget.
Well, and maybe even cuts, because we see some new ones.
Well, I don't know, but it's, I would say this is maintenance, and I would like to see. Using the different terms, but basically, what would it look like if we increased services to the community? And then what would it look like if we decreased? I mean, in in the end, the discussion I would like to present to the town is to say. Are we staying the same? Are we increasing? Are we decreasing? In other words, this frame that to me left that out, so you're advocating, and I agree with you. That we would have, I mean, this to me is what we do to maintain. And and when I say maintain, I'm saying that's a general term, you know, because we are adding a few things, but it's maintenance. And then what would it look like if we did, drew in a little bit in there?
But see, to your point, and I think we're mixing here, right? It's, it's like the base budget, a maintenance budget, right, with a few adds and a few subtracts. I would like to see a base budget and then take the adds and subtracts separately.
So, so to go back to the same thing, to agree with what you just said, so Javier, it would be. From my perspective, so maybe when we sort out, I I mean, I really am asking for three different budgets over time. And what I am saying is, the one, in agreement with what I mean, said, what is the maintenance? You know, what does it cost for us to have the same level of service? It's gonna cost more because it's inflation. And then, again, so just moving forward.
Yeah, because there's been decisions to make, been decisions made implicitly to take things out. That we haven't agreed on as a body, right? So community development is one of those.
Yeah, I mean, this is just a proposed scenario as it says up here. Could we maybe, over the course of the next couple of weeks? I'll email you, uh, and it's gonna be outrageous, put the ball in, it's gonna be outrageous.
Right.
That way we can see, like, oh, with everything on everybody's wish list, we are now.
At this level.
Fifty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars over what we could possibly spend. And then we can start going through and say, okay, well then, let's get this out, let's get this. But, but go ahead and put in everything that everybody wants.
Okay.
And even like, so right now you have the twenty-five thousand dollar reserve group.
Yeah.
Even if it takes us up using all of that and then stuff, so we know, like, we could possibly have this budget. But it might be easier for us then to say.
To make a choice.
Do without this, we can do without that.
But, but there's another interesting.
And I'll help you do it, but now that's a lot of taxes.
No, but I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay.
This is policy direction again.
But the interesting thing about that narrative is, it's not just about making choices. It allows us to have a conversation about where might there be opportunities for additional revenue to actually fund these.
Yeah, then we can really say, like, if we really want.
Right, right.
This is how much it actually costs.
Absolutely, that's where, where I'm getting to, absolutely.
So Javier, your budget, what you've done here, I think is great, this, this is really helpful, and it's, it, there's a couple of things. That are done here, so I think it's, I think it's helpful, and I think it's good that as quickly as you can move us to conclusion, I would encourage you.
Yeah, I actually have another second feeling.
Yeah, so, so um municipal building, expenses that went up. Uh, I increased on that, electrical.
We spent five thousand dollars on cleaning.
Yeah.
A week?
No, a year.
A year, I thought, okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I told you, I started getting a little crazy. I saw weekly cleaning and I saw five thousand, that. Yeah, sorry, sorry.
No, that's, I was like, that's crazy. Alright. Yeah.
Parks and trails, just copied over, and that will depend thousand.
Javier, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second. Mr. Mary, you're just kind of suggesting at the moment, just kind of skipping to the end, if that were the words. I think I wasn't doing that, and I was following up on it.
Yeah.
Well, let's just get to the highlights. We don't have to go through everything, parks can. Well, let's just get to the highlights, we don't have to go through everything, parks and trails is flat.
Yeah, police department, we just pass.
Right.
Street department stays about the same, uh, we had some savings on staffing, but then also, I'm trying to reflect a little bit of. What I think is more maintenance cost material.
Yeah, and Eddie keeps talking about street sweeper and things like that, so that probably should be on the wishlist and stuff like that. All right, try them.
So the street sweeper, though, I thought we could get, like, I don't know.
Tourism, um, a small increase, uh, for, I mean, this is a worthwhile discussion. But in the past years, we, we've been doing our events with ten thousand, and we cut six thousand five hundred, or uh, three thousand five hundred. Um, my inclination is the last kind of industry that was pulling a surplus, lowering it a little bit, so I'm running it through.
Actually, it depends on the strategy, right?
Yeah.
If we're gonna have more events, then maybe we need a bigger one.
Yeah.
One per quarter, we talked about outside of the Fourth of July, potentially, and so you could budget for that, I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry.
So we can budget for that, that's Meredith.
I really kinda want the Founder's Day Festival to be pretty huge. And I, I'd like to make the Founder's Day Festival a thing going forward every year, but because this is what, two fifty? It's around, it's around number this year, um.
Yeah.
But I, I think I can make it huge and epic. On a, on a shoestring.
Well, you, I think that should really be looked at, right, because this is probably mostly Fourth of July, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Yeah, so there's very little for anything else, and I think we do need, because that will bring in revenue now, that's a, an opportunity. And if we increase this somewhat, we might get tremendous revenue benefit from having one a quarter.
Yeah, I mean, look what used to happen here during Harry Potter.
Oh my gosh, that was amazing, yeah.
So, uh, town planning stays flat, thousand dollars for small certification documents. Uh, sometimes pizza, when we do strategic planning, uh, but, um, it isn't the same amount as grant funding for previous years ago. And when we were doing community development, so the, the highlights on bolted at the bottom is that. This current, which I think maintenance is a good adjective, has operating expenses, which excludes that capital improvement line. Which needs to get edited, uh, seven oh five, capital improvement, which right now includes the JAG grant is thirty something. Um, total expenses, uh, four seven two twenty.
Seven four two, two twenty, right?
And then you have your revenue, six seven six, which we discussed at the beginning. And then that includes right now, because we haven't, I wanted to use this session to discuss. Uh, primarily what I thought was some policy decisions, which was a lot of capital influx, and now I'm here, community investment. Um, I had that twenty five thousand that I just left there, because I didn't feel beyond what I presented in this maintenance budget right now. Really comfortable with, uh, even before. Even with a scenario before doing a recommendation.
I think it's a good baseline, Javier, I think we just need to get it. Where, I, I like Meredith's suggestion, that let's put the wishlist in with reason and see where we get.
So Javier, can you repeat that real quick? We want, um, policy decisions, I know what we said earlier, public notices, so. Community development, what's the other thing we need to have?
So I came into the meeting thinking that probably policy questions that you guys need to address was discussion of capital. And then parks and trails, and then, uh, what's the word to use? Um, in general, the resource planning. Uh, which is that stuff that isn't really capital, but feels big enough that we need to still keep addressing. Um, what I heard here was a discussion about what local agencies for it means to the town. Um, that's for local agency capital, parks and trails, public notice. And then I can work on. As you give me information about street sweepers, about events, um, I think Meredith's suggestion was a good one, but. Put, put what we are, and then having a discussion about, um. How do we put it, strategic priorities.
One thing I'm gonna have to think about. Coming quickly is a truck for maintenance. Those two trucks, those two trucks are terrible.
Yeah.
They're breaking down right and left.
Then put it on the wishlist, yeah, add it into the budget, let's, maybe, can we color code them, Melody? I'm sorry, when we put them in, can we color code them to know that it's a wishlist versus what the baseline here was?
Yeah, I think you put one on the right and color code, and then start adding color, or rose, and then they'll add up. Okay, I, I had enough work. Yeah. What, what timing do you want for me to come back to you guys, are we looking at work session?
They get the priority of work session.
That would be.
Anything that doesn't need to be at work session, we'll just short them on those.
All right, sounds good. I'm here for this.
It just. Came out, it's back, it came out of my mouth, and then it flew, I have no idea what it was.
Most of you are turned.
Second.